Good afternoon and welcome to the regularly planned session of the Glendale Planning Commission for February 7, 2018. I have roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Saturian.
Here.
May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, January 31, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise and follow in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is the election of Chairperson and Chairperson pro tem. Do I have any nominations, please?
Chair, I'd like to make nomination.
By all means.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Astorian for the chair position.
Very good. Do I take another nomination or?
You can ask if there are other nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Planning Commissioner Astorian as the new Chairperson for 2018.
We're taking a vote on it first.
Okay.
No, we need to take a roll call vote.
Okay.
But thank you for your.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Aye.
Well, I suppose this is this. Now, you get to do the.
I thought we would do it from the next time, next meeting, right? Or is it this meeting?
That's this meeting.
Yeah, from this one, yeah. Hmm, it's the transition of powers, isn't it? I'll take this, thank you very much. I don't know about you, I had power.
Okay, so let's start with approval of the minutes.
Oh, you can also.
Pro tem.
Chair pro tem.
Okay. So, are there any nominations for Chair pro tem? If there aren't, if I may, make a suggestion. And my suggestion would be one of our two rookies. This would give them a great entry in, when an IFAP not around, that is by the way, in them. And so, any one of them, I would.
Mr. Chair, may I make a nomination?
Please do.
How about Commissioner Sebastian?
Shabazian?
Sebastian.
I second the motion.
So, we don't, we did a, for a tem, we need a vote as well, right?
Yes. Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
And Chairperson Astorian.
Aye. All right. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from December 6th and December 13th. Is there a motion for December 6th? Or can we do both together? We can do both together. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I make a motion to approve both.
All right. We don't need a vote on this one.
We just have to have a motion and a second.
I second.
Very good. Item number six, I don't see any world communications cards. To number seven, there are no zoning appeals. And item number eight, there are no planning commission items or old business, are there? Is there any planning commission items? No.
No.
So, why don't we go to new business? Item number one, location 634 and 700 East Lomita Street. Saying Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. Who's shepherding the, Ms. As.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This application was actually continued from the January 17, 2018, Planning Commission, where there was, there was no quorum, so all of these items were continued to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission, which is tonight. 700 East Lomita is a project that involves the development of a new affordable six-unit townhouse-style condominium project in two buildings on two lots that total about 14,000 square feet in size, which is located in the R-2250 medium-density residential zone. There are 12 parking spaces provided in six individual two-car garages with direct access to each unit. The lot, which is being developed by the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity, is surrounded by multifamily uses on all sides. All six units will be affordable to low-income first-time homebuyers. Some of the background on this project are that variances were granted for the project for three areas. One was for at-grade parking with reduced interior garage dimensions of 18 by 19 versus 20 by 20. Interior setbacks for the building and the trash enclosure setback. This project has also received administrative design review approval and is currently under construction. The project site is situated at mid-block with street access from Lomita Avenue. There are four units that directly face Lomita with the remaining two units located at the rear of the site. As I mentioned, the at-grade parking is in individual garages accessed from the driveway to the west side of the property and are tucked behind the units at the, for the front building and integrated into the rear building, which is screened from street view by the front building. Pedestrian access to the front units is from Lomita using individual paths each unit and individual access to the rear units is through a landscaped area off a common drive aisle. Common open space and landscaped open spaces are provided throughout the property. The required common open space is located at the rear of the property adjacent, adjacent to the rear of the building. Each of the new residential units also has private front porches and balconies that range from about 45 to 75 square feet in size. Each unit features three bedrooms in approximately 600, 1,600 square feet. The buildings will be two stories at approximately 22 feet in height. And in the context of the neighborhood, there is a mix of small-scale multifamily buildings, mainly comprised of one, two, and some three-story buildings in the vicinity. The density development of sixth unit is just below the maximum permitted in the R-2250 zone. Seven would be permitted on this size of lot with frontage greater than 90 feet. The site is physically suitable for the proposed development. It's flat and has been designed to fit within the rectangular-shaped lot. It is compatible with the surrounding buildings, given that the surrounding area is zoned for multifamily residential uses and all properties are currently developed with multifamily residential buildings. The development conforms to the city's, city's goals for development in the neighborhood is consistent with the general plan ally, elements as outlined in the tables in the staff report. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve tentative tract number 74974 with the findings and conditions in the attached motion. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions.
Any questions for Ms. As? Should I close the public hearing?
Yes.
It is.
If you have no, if you have no cards, if there's anybody to speak, you'll want to ask if anybody's here to speak on the item, but if not, yes, you could close the public hearing and, and have a closing public hearing and have deliberation.
Very good. So, let's start deliberation. I don't believe anybody wants to talk on this, on this item.
If anybody is ready to make a motion, I'll support.
Please, Mr. Sir.
I think it's a great project. We need affordable housing here in City of Glendale. May I actually make a motion, Chairperson?
Please.
Or was there any other? So, I'm making a motion that upon consideration of tentative tract number 74974 and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, the tentative tract number 74974 is hereby exempt from California CQ review as a Class III exemption and approved subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapters 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 34 additional conditions listed in the letter. I'm making a motion on that.
With, with conditions and findings as stated in the staff report, right?
Correct, yes.
Excellent.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'll second it.
Hang on a second. Maybe, there's no further discussion, I hope, right? All right.
You can't, you cannot second if you're the chairman.
I did.
Oh.
I did.
I just wanted to clarify that there was nothing further to say.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
Chairperson Astorian.
Aye. Item number two, 600 West Wilson Avenue. Is Chris Babdikian in the minutes? Is he here?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Babdikian, how are you?
Setting up the board.
It's, it's been a while since we've seen you.
Welcome, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. This next item is a similar item to the prior item. It's a condominium tract map that's being proposed. The, the property is located at 600 West Wilson Avenue and the development that, that is under construction there has received design review approval, complies with the zoning code without any variances or other exceptions. And it's a three-unit building, three-bedroom each, with attached garages, a two-story building, and the building is under construction. The proposal for tonight is the sub, the airspace subdivision of the building into three condominium units. The project complies with the zoning code, complies with all the, is consistent with all the elements of the general plan and staff's recommendation is for the Planning Commission to approve the subdivision with the conditions that are listed in the staff report and which are also repeated in the attached motion. Having said this, I'd like to conclude my pre-presentation unless there are questions from the Planning Commission.
Are there any questions for Ms. Babdikian?
I have one question. What is the maximum units allowed actually on this lot?
Three units would be allowed and three units were proposed and approved.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now, we can go to the engineer, right? On, of, the engineer, Mr. Marjorie Rosson.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commissioner. My name is Haik Marjorie Rosson. I'm the tract engineer. So, I'll let me congratulate you on your point. And this is a typical condo project that received their approval six, seven months ago and they started the construction. The project is under construction right now. It's a three units with 1,800 square feet of unit sizes. They all have three parking garages, private garages. And it's a great project. There's not that much excavation or anything down to the site, so we are in compliance with all the city zoning and codes and we concur with their staff findings and they will comply with all the conditions.
Is it still exempt from having a homeowner's association because it's less than five units or that's never been ruled? That's, okay.
It's exempt from going to Department of Real Estate to get their rights, but they still need to get their association and CCAs.
Great. All right. Any questions from Ms. Marjorie, sir? No, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. If, is there anybody else that wants to talk about this thing? Good. So, we'll close the public hearing side of it and.
Despite the fact that Mr. Marjorie Rosson did not congratulate me on a year well served, I'm willing to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that upon consideration of the tentative tract map number 74147 and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all the documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, that tract, tentative tract.
Number 74147 is hereby exempt from CQ review as a Class III exemption and approved subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 32 additional conditions listed below and that we fi, hereby make each and all of the following findings which appear in the motion prepared by the staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
And Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Next item, item number three, location 1059-1063 and a half, Elma Avenue. Who is, oh, Ms. Milcaut Toledo?
Yes, I am.
Oh, you were here, okay, very good. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. As you stated, Commissioner Astorian, this is case number, it's a time extension for tentative tract number 63783, case number PSUB 2005037. It's a request for a time extension of an approved tentative tract map to subdivide a new three-story multifamily development consisting of nine condominium units over a semi-subterranean garage in the R-2250 medium-density residential zone. Pursuits to state law, the approval is automatically extended for 60 days upon submission of the time extension request. Approval of the tentative tract was set to expire March 13, 2016, or upon Planning Commission action on May 4, 2016, the Planning Commission approved a two-year tract map extension to expire March 13 of this year, 2018. State laws allow, excuse me, state law allows for up to six years of time extension and the applicant has already received two, two-year time extension, so therefore they are eligible for a time extension of up to four years. So, this project is not new to you. You did see this a couple of years ago. I did pin up the tentative tract along with photos showing, showing the current conditions. They have been moving forward. The report does explain in some detail chronology of events and the letter of the applicant submitted for the time extension request and hence why they need an additional time extension. I will conclude my remarks. If you have any further questions or any, I am available.
Any questions for Ms. Toledo? What's the extension for her?
They get up to four years.
But what do we grant?
Well, he's requesting 18 months, but we'll leave it up to, it's basically up to the commission. They get up to four years. So, the commission can decide if they want to grant two years. I should take that back. I believe he noted two years. Originally, he mentioned 18.
24 months is what you mean, right? Okay.
But you have up to, he gets up to four years.
Right. Well, let's, let's take a couple of baby steps first, right? Okay, any questions for Ms. Toledo? None?
I have a question.
Please do.
So, as the Chairperson was just suggesting, if he approved two years and they need more time, do they have to come back again?
Yes, yes, they do.
Okay.
And they need to file again and go through the motions.
Public hearing portion is complete. Anybody wants to make a motion or?
I'll make a motion. Upon consideration of a time extension request for tentative tract number 63783, set tentative tract map is hereby approved for two years to expire on March 13, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Very good. Roll call.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
Chairperson Astorian.
Yes, thank you. So, item number four, the location is at 708 East Palmer Avenue, tentative tract map number 73049. Milcaut Toledo again.
Yes, hi. Okay, so, this proposal is again tentative tract 73049, PTTM CP 1727975, and the location is 708 East Palmer Avenue. The request is to subdivide a proposed new two-unit townhouse-style multifamily residential condominium project with on-grade parking located in the R-3050 modern-density residential zone. Planning staff is recommending that the tentative tract be approved subject to compliance of the, with the State Subdivision Map Act under Chapters 16.32 Final Maps and 16.16 for new condominiums of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code. The project does highlight what the surrounding use is, which is multifamily. We have R-1650 across the street to the north. There is R-1R restricted residential zone to the south, and we have R-2250 medium-density along with R-1s to the east, and the park, which is a public par, public park, Palmer Park, located directly adjacent to the property to the west, which is zoned SR, and the project site is R-3050, currently under construction. There is a chronology of events as it relates to when the design review was approved and the building permits were executed, along with a description of the project, which again is a new two-year multifamily residential condominium project on a 9,058-square-foot lot. The project will consist of two residential units and they will provide townhouse style, which includes two two-car garages for each unit, and then they have a separate detached one-car garage at the rear. There is, all utilities are in place. There is an easement, flood control easement at the rear of the property, so they are aware of that and they're proposing to comply with that easement. I have included suggested conditions from city divisions, so at this time I will conclude my remarks and unless you have any further questions, I am available.
I just have a one quick question. Out of curiosity, why do they have that one separate garage?
So, what happens is for a unit that has three bedrooms, it's 2.5 spaces per unit, which translates, 2.5 times 2, 5.
Any other questions for Ms. Toledo? I have one. Is, in all of these developments that we hear about and come in front of us, do the storm drain maintenance, this new law and all that, is all being implemented in all of these or it all depends on which one and how?
That's a good question, and I don't have.
Well, let's start with this one.
Answer.
Does it have the storm drain maintenance?
Yes, it does.
Filtration, all that? Okay, very good. All right. If there is no other questions for Ms. Toledo, I'll close the public hearing side of it. Any motions?
I'm.
Unless, unless Mr. Marjorie Rosson wants to.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I, I thought you, you'd like to quit when you're ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that upon consideration of tract, tentative tract number 73049, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, that tentative tract number 73049 is hereby exempt from CQ review as a Class III exemption and approved subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16.16 and 16.32 of Title 16 of Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 41 additional conditions listed below. And that the Planning Commission make each and all of the findings presented in the motion before us.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Very good. There's a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Saturian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
Yes.
Chairperson Astorian.
Aye. Item number five, location 1350 South Glendale Avenue, use variance case. Ms. Toledo?
Thank you. So, this item before you is a use variance. Its location is at 1315 South Glendale Avenue. The applicant is requesting a use variance to allow a warehouse use for the purpose of storing tires operated by America's Tire. I'll give you a little background on the project. The site is approximately 6,063 square feet. It is developed with a one-story, 2,213-square-foot commercial development with three onsite parking spaces located at the front of the property with access from Glendale Avenue. The last use on that particular location was in auto upholstery, which is essentially a retail business. Prior to 2006, the property or the businesses that operated there was a vehicle auto repair and part sales. Directly adjacent to the subject site is a tire store, America's Tire, addressed at 1327 South Glendale Avenue on the corner of Los Feliz and Glendale Avenue. America's Tire offers sales and installation of tires. The proposed warehouse will be used to store tires in conjunction with that adjacent tire store. In 2007, America's Tire has operated, operated their only tire store in Glendale at this location. They are proposing to continue operating the tire store, however, they need more storage space because the existing tire store on the adjacent property does not have the sufficient, well, the existing tire store doesn't have the sufficient square footage that they need to store their tires. The existing 4,028-square-foot tire store has designated 1,689 square feet of, for tire storage, while the remaining 2,500 square feet is used for vehicle service bays, there's three, and a customer service area and offices. The 1,689-square-foot storage area is not sufficient to effectively service their customers due to the volume of customer service at this location. So, what they're proposing is the existing or the subject space, which lends itself for this type of, I guess, environment, if you will, to, for storage, is zoned C3. Warehouse is not allowed in the C3 zone, so therefore the variance is required, in this case, a use variance is required. The surrounding uses to the north, we have, as far as zone, it's all C3 to the north, to the south, and across the street. However, there is a CA, which is commercial auto, which is essentially commercial, but mainly for auto dealership, located sort of northwest of the subject site. This prop, I, the staff is able to make the findings in a positive manner, is recommending approval. The current conditions of the tire store, their operation is not proposed to change at all. The applicant is proposing to maintain the existing operation of America's Tire. They just need more storage for the tires. So, there are specifications in the staff report regarding what the applicant has informed staff as it relates to loading, deliveries, and staff is recommending conditions set forth so the Planning Commission can consider. At this point, I will conclude my remarks unless you'd like me to go over the recommended findings that staff is prepared and conditions. If not, the applicant is here and he can address the findings.
Go ahead, please.
I have a quick question. The proposed metal shed, that would be removed, so what would be the use of that?
Is that the little?
Yes.
Can you put it on the picture, right next? They're proposing, according to the elevations, they're proposing, let me address the panels. So, that this is the existing floor plan, which I'm assuming you're referring to this?
That upper corner there.
So, it's not? The applicant has not indicated what they're going to do with that. I would have to defer to him if they're going to remove them, assuming they are according to this.
Yeah, it says it's going to be moved.
Yeah.
And then if you're storing tires there, it's going to be nice or?
Well, they can't. They have to, there are conditions that I've included or suggested conditions that would mitigate any outdoor storage of tires similar to a tire store. So, everything, the operation of the business would have to be conducted inside. They couldn't store their tires. That would be a violation. As a matter of fact, again, that's one of the conditions that they're subject to for the operation of a tire store, and we're recommending similar conditions.
Maybe applicant can further explain what, you know, you're planning to do for that space.
My name is Steve. I'm here with EI Design. Yeah, we're actually proposing to remove that shed area back there, and so it was never really a thought force to store tires. It kind of just doesn't look very good. Maybe it's a little unsafe, so we were going to go ahead and get rid of it.
And just leave it?
And just leave it as is. And actually, you know, they haven't done a lot of looking into the total layout that's going to happen. First things first is to get the, the use changed, and then at that point, we'll go back in for like a TI permit or something like that.
I'm sorry, I'm missing, am I missing something here? You, you already have a storage of about 1,600. You, you already have a storage of about sixteen hundred and eighty, semi, odd square.
Are you talking about for the existing America's Tire?
Right.
Yeah, so they're, you're talking about for their tire storage, they have a capacity of eighteen hundred right now.
Okay.
Which is pretty far below a typical store would do like twenty-four hundred.
And your proposal is to take it up about four or five hundred square feet more? Is that what, what it comes out to?
No, the total would be about thirty-eight hundred.
The total square foot for next door is twenty-two hundred thirteen square feet in that we would be able to get an additional seven hundred units. So, it would be just...
As opposed to sixteen hundred and eighty, it will be twenty-two hundred and something, right? Or is it a separate?
It would, it would be separate. It would be just a tire storage facility for itself for the next door.
Basically, they have sixteen, my understanding what is that there's about sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred eighty-nine, seventeen hundred square feet right now. And then there'll be an additional twenty-two hundred, which will add up to thirty-eight hundred square feet of only storage facility.
Correct, yeah, storage and metal.
And the facility itself is about forty-five hundred square feet.
Including the storage.
And that's, that's really undersized for an America's Tire. You know, they're typical, it's like ten thousand one hundred ninety square feet and you know, just due to the size of this property and everything like that, they've had a lot of challenges over there. So, they were looking at picking up this extra square footage and getting, you know, seven hundred units is a big deal for them to get in there.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Chairperson, I have a question from staff. That's okay.
Sure.
I was wondering what zone our warehouse is allowed in?
Industrial, which is IND. There's some also in the IMU, IMUR. Those are the main zones where it would be allowed, but not in this case in the C-three, C-one, C-two, CA, CR.
And the second question I have is my understanding is that American Tire has been operating since two thousand and seven and at the time it was the only tire store?
That's my understanding.
Is that still true to...
That's my understanding, according to the applicant. This is the only tire store in Glendale?
In that location, I see.
The only America's Tire, yeah.
In Glendale, is that this location?
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Because I have seen other tire stores, I was just trying to understand it correctly. Thank you.
I am, any other questions for Ms. Toledo?
Just about, how, do they have to get a special kind of permanent fire department or protection, they need that?
Because of the combustible nature of the...
They'll go through fire plan check and at that time, fire engineering will review or fire prevention will review the plans and issue corrections as needed to address or mitigate any potential fire hazards.
And so, this, this, this storage area is going to be a self-contained, blocked-off area, right?
Correct. They're not proposing any aesthetic changes. They're just, according to the floor plan, they're mainly introducing racks to store tires, all taking place inside the building.
And, and so what you had is the non-per, non-permitted part of the existing temporary metal, which they alluded that they will be taking it up. Why don't you make that part of the condition as well?
Okay.
This way, that it will address your concern, right?
Thank you, Chairman.
So, with that addition, is, are there any other questions for Mr. Toledo?
No, I don't have any questions.
All right. So, public hearing portion of it is closed. Any motions?
I was actually just going to read a portion of the staff report and it explained what C-three zones are actually. And it said that the primary goal and objective of the C-three zone is to provide a full range of goods and services to the community located along the commercial thoroughfare. And I kind of went in, I was looking at the zoning map and trying to understand the area and there is a lot of uses that are similar to, to what is proposed here. It was kind of, it's kind of difficult to kind of just take a property and change, change the use of it because it would be most convenient for the project. I, I see that as an issue, but at the same time, there is a lot of similar projects or similar uses around the area. I don't know how long the upholstery store has been empty, so maybe this will be a good change for the area, but that was something that I wanted to bring to everyone else's attention, that the C-three is normally a zone according to our municipal quote, that is for goods and services, not necessarily a warehouse. I am not sure how the American Tire company works. I tried to look online. I understand that there are some online orders or folks with going, brand bulk are being closed, that might be a good location again, but I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if any of other commissioners have any, anything they want to add to that or if they noticed that, you know, that is not necessarily part of the C-three zone.
But that's why they're applying for a variance.
Correct, but at the same time, that variance would just, it's, it is taking away from the, the C-three commercial zone for us, for the city. Some, a commercial that, a commercial use that could go there and could actually benefit the individuals that live in the area. They have been operating there for about eleven years and they've been doing well and we have other tire stores. A mega tire store, are we going to affect other uses, other tire mom and pop shops that are in the area? Is it going to affect them as they're growing in size twice as much as, or more than double the amount that they currently are, one point five times? So, those are the things that, that are, that I'm thinking about and even though the use, you know, it's, it, that area, the use that they have, it falls within, but there's so much other consequences that might.
So, specific to this case, because we're not addressing a general use guideline for a zoning area or whatever, but specific to this case, they're applying for variance, which is well afforded in our codes, in our, in our ordinances and it's up to us to make the findings and approve it or not. It is okay if it's a C-two or C, depending who and when, anybody can apply for a variance. If we make the findings, we'll grant it. If we don't, we don't, so...
And one point I'd like to make, my legal team has indicated the variance runs with the use, so once that use goes away, and that's how we've kind of crafted the findings and the condition, once the use goes away, this use variance goes away as well.
Right.
And it doesn't necessarily mean tire, American Tire, the use meaning any tire store?
Any tire store, correct.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Toledo? Is there a motion?
Before we do that, if, if I could have one point of clarification, members of the planning commission, for that additional condition, I just want to read it to the record to make sure everyone's on the same page, that the unpermitted existing temporary metal roof shed in the rear, as noted on the plans, be removed prior to the time the use is undertaken. Hopefully, that's workable for the applicant.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Please do.
Upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of a current record relative to variance case number PVAR one-seven-two-three-seven-zero-two located at thirteen fifty in South Glendale Avenue and after having conducted a public hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby approves the variance PVAR one-seven-two-three-seven-zero-two in accord with the findings and conditions set forth below A through B and fourteen conditions and with that additional fifteenth condition referring to the existing unpermitted building.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call.
Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Manukian.
Aye.
Satuian.
Aye.
Shabazian.
No.
And Chairperson Astorian.
Yes. Very good. Item number nine, community development department updates.
Yes, I just want to point out that we will not have a planning commission meeting on February twenty-first. Is this on? And that the South Glendale Community Plan is available online for anybody who wishes to read it. We also have the draft environmental impact report for the South Glendale Community Plan. That's also available online. It's out for public review right now. Public comment period is open until five-thirty PM on Monday, March twelfth. So, everyone is encouraged to take a look at it and read it and submit comments. We have a comment forum that is online that anybody can submit electronically. And then we're also going to have a special meeting of the planning commission and transportation and parking commission on March seventh, Wednesday, March seventh. It would be a regular meeting date for you, but because we're going to have a joint meeting, it makes it a special meeting. It'll start at five o'clock, just as our regular meeting, as your regular meeting does. I want to make the public aware of that because anybody who wishes to make an oral comment concerning the EIR, they're welcome to come to that meeting. That would be the appropriate time to do that if they don't want to submit a written comment. And then we're asking that the planning commission consider to reserve a time on May thirtieth, a Wednesday, it would be the fifth Wednesday in May, aside for a special meeting of the planning commission to consider the South Glendale Community Plan. Right now, that's a tentative date. We don't know when we'll have a final EIR completed, but we're reserving that date in the hopes that we will have a final EIR done by that time. And so, that concludes staff's comments.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments from the commissioners? Please go ahead.
Kudos to a wonderful job that was done by our former chairman, Commissioner Manukian. Thank you very much for your service and congratulations, Commissioner Astorian. We're looking forward to working with you for the rest of the year.
Hopefully.
I second that.
Adjournment.
So moved.